I wish to call the order, the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for the October 10th meeting. It's good to have this group together. I wish that you would please stand for our pledge of allegiance and prayer. These will be led by Chairman Jeff Phillips.
Thank you. Pray with, bow with me, please. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings already received and the blessings yet to come. God, we ask that you be with those in our community who are less fortunate, and we ask that you meet the needs of those individuals and their families. God, as this community continues to grow, we ask that you bless this community as we face obstacles. We ask that you also give this commission the wisdom to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the county and the citizens of this county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. If you would place the flag with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. We have a good number here this evening, and I believe most of you have found a seat. Some of you have gone up into the balcony, and it's good to have you interested in what we are discussing this evening. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Jim Everwater. Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle. Charlotte P. Trey Gooch.
Yeah.
David Jones.
Yeah.
Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Kettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum determined. We do not have any minutes for tonight's meeting, so we'll move on to item five. Mr. Demossi, items withdrawn or deferred?
Yes, sir. We do have one item that was pulled off the agenda. That's item number four, Corey Robertson, REZ22-026. This is for property located along Shelbyville Pike, about five acres. Some issues came up, and the applicant pulled the agenda, I'm sorry, pulled this application from the agenda. So if anybody's here for that particular application, it will not be heard. Again, that's Corey Robertson's application on Shelbyville Pike.
Okay. Thank you for that. Item four will not be heard this evening. We'll now go into our new business, deals with item A. Item six, we'll start, this evening, we are changing the agenda. We're moving item six to the top of the list due to the fact of the involvement, interest, plus IT has some things that are going to have to be shown on the screen, and we're moving to this one first. This is item six with Stephanie Maccas, number REZ22-021. Location 1218 West Jefferson Pike. Commissioner is District Two, Steve Piercy. Size of the site is approximately seven acres. Existing zoning is residential, medium density, REM. Proposed zoning is planned unit development, PUD, for rural retreat event venue. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As you stated, this property is located along West Jefferson Pike. The staff comments on your iPads, I'm just going to kind of run through those just quickly. I'm not going to read them word for word, but the applicant would like to use this property as a multi-use event venue, or what we would call a rural retreat in our regulations. The zoning require, zoning ordinance, excuse me, requires properties that are less than 10 acres in size to go through the PUD rezoning process to establish a retreat or event venue. There is quite a bit of detail in the applicant's pattern book. We'll go over some of those things here. The applicant is present, I know she'll go into a little more detail at that time, but proposed events include weddings, receptions, church functions, et cetera. The applicant's also proposing to work with the Tennessee Historical Society and MTSU Center of Historical Preservation to provide historic tours of the property. At the time, when we first wrote these comments, there wasn't much detail on that, but she has added some detail as far as the tours. I know she'll get into that, I believe, that they are Monday and Tuesday, as I recall. Information provided by the applicant indicates they would like to hold somewhere between 30, 40 events per year. The maximum number of attendees would be 100. That's actually down originally when this was considered, by staff at least, it hasn't made to the planning commission yet. They were looking at 150, but she has reduced that to 100. There are several employees at each event, two off-duty police officers, a security guard, wedding planner, event coordinator, and at least three other employees. Events would be on weekends and not weekdays, and the applicant does plan to live on the property. There is a concept plan that's included with your pattern book and as a standalone attachment. There are two primary structures on this property, the owner's residence, which the applicant plans to occupy, as we discussed, and also two conjoined cabins. The applicant is proposing to construct a new wedding barn, a new structure, to be built behind the main residence on the property, which would house all the different events. There is a small area for outdoor weddings, but the receptions and everything would all be within the larger building. Grass parking is proposed, which is allowed under our regulations, with paved handicap ADA spaces, and she's also planning on offering overnight accommodations for the bride and groom. Again, I'd call your attention to the pattern book, which is located on your iPads as well. There is an existing driveway to this property onto West Jefferson Pike. They are not proposing to use this entrance for any of their events. The concept plan does show the main connection for venue parking coming off of Roanoke Drive. We've discussed our concerns with the applicant regarding the site distance at the intersection of Roanoke and West Jefferson Pike. The pattern book does outline provisions to employ off-duty police officers to help direct traffic and to be present at all events. Should this application be approved, of course, the applicant would need to show all proposed improvements on an engineered site plan. Again, that's typical for any rezoning that we see, and all those vehicular and parking areas would have to meet our regulations. Retreats are treated a little bit differently when it comes to buffering requirements. Buffering is determined by the setback of the buildings from the property lines, the closest point of the proposed interior wedding barn to adjacent properties, about 65 feet, which this would call for a type-three buffer. The applicant is proposing a privacy fence and a significant number of new trees around the northern property line to help buffer the venue from the adjacent properties. Not as much buffering shown on the eastern property line, however, the closest structure is about 370 feet from that line, so there are also existing trees in that area which can be counted to a buffer. And then, of course, our performance standards would also have to be met. The zoning ordinance does state that any outdoor lighting, amplified sound must be discontinued by 10:00 PM, which this is also stated in the applicant's pattern book. They also state that any solid waste or trash would be handled by a third-party vendor. Most of our concerns, as we discussed earlier, had to do with the traffic that is in that area. In the absence of any significant improvements to West Jefferson Pike, site distance at the intersection of Roanoke Drive and West Jefferson Pike will continue to be an issue. However, the applicant has stated in her pattern book that she does plan to use off-duty police officers for this proposed, should it be approved during these events. Overall, we didn't make a recommendation on this. With all applications, there's always the potential for positive and negative impacts. This is no different in that regard. So we can kind of see on both sides of things, but we decided to stay neutral on this. So that's staff's presentation. I know the applicant is present. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners? Any questions for staff?
It looks like from the parking lot here, Mr. Chairman and Doug, that they are going to discontinue the existing drive and all traffic come in off of Roanoke?
Well, at least for-
Parking lot's covered in the drive.
For the venue, now, yeah, I don't know if they're going to completely close it. It's not going to be open for events. I think it's just going to be used for, you know, their private drive.
Other questions? Staff? If not, the applicant now, we may have the applicant or her representative to come forward at this time. Give us your name, and will you represent him?
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Matt Taylor of SEC. We're at 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and we do represent the applicant on the project. Believe Mr. Demossi did a good job describing the project. I did want to go through a few other details. Again, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I represent McAvilla, the applicant on the project. It's our pleasure to present this opportunity for what we think is a unique project along Jefferson Pike, that we've termed Riverside Wedding Retreat. We think that Riverside will offer an opportunity to preserve a piece of history while also creating a location for a unique commerce and a place for couples to start making lifetime, a lifetime of memories. Riverside, in order to do that, Riverside needs to construct a new reception hall or wedding hall and a new parking lot. They'll do this while preserving the existing house and the cabins on site due to their historic nature, and all this will combine to allow for a new wedding venue in Rutherford County. Several months ago, my client hosted a neighborhood meeting. She heard the concerns of the neighbors and has spent the months since trying to revise her plan and to mitigate the potential impacts of her project due to that meeting. So one of the largest concerns that she heard was noise, and so with that, she's limited the hours of operation to 10 o'clock, and we anticipate most of these weddings to be on Saturday evenings. She's also committed to all of the music being located inside this new reception hall that she's going to build. The ceremonies can be held outside, but as you all know, ceremonies are very quiet, intimate events. They do not create a lot of noise, and they're created, and they're located approximately 250 feet, or over 250 feet, from the nearest house. She's also committed to extensive buffering along the north side with a lot of evergreens and eight-feet-tall privacy fencing, some of which she's already started to plant. She's also committed to having security guards on-site during all events, during the entirety of the events. That security guard is there to make sure that her clients follow all these rules and regulations. Another one of the concerns that she heard during that meeting was traffic, and so she has cut that maximum capacity from what she presented at the neighborhood meeting by 30 percent, going from 150 guests down to 100. So that automatically cuts the number of trips during any given event. She's also committed to hiring two off-duty police officers for every event to manage traffic. So one of those policemen would be at the intersection of Jefferson and Roanoke. The other would be located at the intersection of Roanoke and our proposed driveway, and we would close off that existing driveway onto Jefferson Pike, therefore eliminating turning conflicts on Jefferson Pike. We think that the benefits of those off-duty cops not only aid in reducing speed, it will create more efficient traffic flow during the events and create for safer environment in the general vicinity of this intersection. We've also limited the use of our facility to off-peak traffic times, so that people are coming and going when Jefferson Pike is much less busy than 5:00 on any given day, which if this was a residential development, that's exactly when people would be coming home and adding to that peak traffic tone. We did this while keeping in mind that Jefferson Pike is an arterial roadway, and Roanoke is a collector that moves traffic between cutoff and Jefferson Pike. And when you think about where you want non-residential use or commercial use, you want it at intersections of arterials and collectors, and that's exactly what we've proposed. And this is a very infrequent use, so it's kind of the best of both worlds. She also heard concerns of light pollution. So again, we've located all of these facilities nearly a football field away from any houses to the north. And so the, I've always heard that the best buffer is distance, so we think we've achieved that by where we've located and planned for these activities to be at. We've also committed to a photometric plan being presented at the site plan level to show that there is no light pollution on our neighbors. And then, again, the extensive buffering and fencing that she's planned along the northern perimeter to further mitigate these impacts. Since that neighborhood meeting, as Mr. Demossi said, my client has formed partnerships with state and local historical societies to allow for intimate, small tours of the house and cabins due to their historic nature. These will be limited to between 10 and 1:00 on Mondays and Tuesdays and be of no greater size than 25 people. That's not saying that we're anticipating 25 people there every Monday and Tuesday, but we're limiting the times, the days, and the maximum number. So we see these being as small occurrences and infrequent occurrences. Through these efforts, I think that my client's outreach efforts to neighbors, her partnerships with historical societies, and her relentless efforts and willingness to revise the plan to try to mitigate these impacts on the neighbors, I think you'll see that she's already started to prove herself as an outstanding corporate citizen, corporate citizen, that being an asset to Rutherford County if she's allowed to proceed with this project. I hope that you'll agree with that, and hope that you'll agree that it's a worthwhile project that can add value to the immediate area, but as well as the community itself. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the plan. I think my client would also like to say a few words if you don't have any questions for me.
Commissioners, anything for Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
I think at this time, we'll just, if, Ms. McAvil, if you'd like to come forward at this time, I don't know if you want this to be a part of your presentation. I think you have some video or something to show?
Oh, yes, please, Michelle.
Is that now? Anything you want to add to the video or do your explanation at this time?
Sure.
Might want to pull that down just a bit.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Maccas. I am proposing the Riverside Wedding Retreat located at 1218 West Jefferson Pike. This is a beautiful rendering of the existing home and what we propose to build. So that's the existing driveway, which we will be gating off. That was just a way to easily show you in the video. And that's the wedding barn. All of this is existing at this time, except for the wedding barn. And the small little area to the left of the wedding barn where we will offer outdoor ceremonies, if someone would like that. We plan on naming the courtyard Jefferson Courtyard. We just really want to incorporate as much of the history of this home into the project. Thank you so much for the opportunity for me to present my project to you. I sincerely appreciate that. The nationally registered landmark Riverside Farm was built in 1830. Riverside originally consisted of several hundred acres. Riverside was a cattle and cotton farm for over a century, an antique shop for over 40 years, and is consistently appreciated for being a community gathering place for many weddings. The historical Riverside Farm is an exceptionally unique place. Riverside is fortunate enough to be working with the Tennessee Historical Society and the MTSU Center of Historical Preservation. They aim to create an exhibit display in both cabins. The Riverside Wedding Retreat is an adaptive reuse of a historical property which ensures the preservation and pays tribute to the conservation of American history in the state The Riverside Wedding Retreat's mission is to preserve and share history while providing a beautiful wedding retreat, which will promote peace and public safety as its number-one concern. The Riverside Wedding Retreat is a preservation project that will serve as a major asset to the community and the entire state of Tennessee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I truly hope you will consider and support the many attributes the Riverside Wedding Retreat will deliver to the great town of Walter Hill and the entire state. This truly will be a preservation project which will preserve the integrity and character and keep the charm of Walter Hill alive for generations. Thank you.
We'll now open, the public comments period open, for those of you that have come to voice your opinion on what you feel on this, this development and this, this presentation and what you're wanting to see in this area. Let me remind you, this is one person at a time. Will come forward and speak up here at the stand. Give us your name, your address, so we can put that in our minutes. To remind you that this will be for three minutes that you'll be given to speak, let you know I have a timer here that you will be timed, so that we've got so many here that we're going to have to do this. There is not a trap floor up here for anything or anything, so, but I will tell you when time's up for you to step down. Remember, there are others waiting to, to come up here and speak. Ask that you please be, excuse me, be polite. No applauding or any of this sort of thing of what we do here. Also, if there are groups of five or so that are going to be saying somewhat of the same thing, if you would like to sort of put your heads together out there and ask one individual to speak on behalf of the group, that would be fine, too. Just say who you're speaking for or how many you're speaking for, and you can take just a little extra more time than the three minutes, but just to let you know. So at this time right now, public comments is open. Mr. Steve Piercy?
Normally, I wait till last, but I have a pressing issue tonight that I must, I must tend to. I've had more calls on this issue than anything I've had in the eight years I've served the county. I never knew there was that many people lived in Roanoke subdivision, and I've campaigned down there, but I didn't know there were that many there. Majority of the calls I had were not in support of this, the venue, the venue part, the wedding venue. Keeping the old Jones home and restoring it and the tours, couldn't be a better idea. Small groups coming, small groups leaving, you know, preserve history. Everybody's a little soft-hearted when we start talking about preserving history. It's a great idea, great idea. It would be the least amount of impact on that area you could possibly have, other than maybe a bed and breakfast to go along with it. The wedding venue is really what the people oppose. It's going to really affect the welfare and safety of the people that live in the Roanoke subdivision. It's going to push on the traffic. Jefferson Pike is a very dangerous road. We have trash trucks on it constantly, day and night, a lot of times, just whenever the landfill is running, day and night. It's a very dangerous highway. The people that work at Nissan have got it labeled the Jefferson 500, because it's a very fast road. The state has come and put signs and blinking lights in what the old people, like myself, remember the Randolph Curves leading right up by this property, because it's a dangerous road. River's on one side, there's nowhere to go out on that side if you get run off the road. I have a wedding venue. I've been accused of having one. I'm more than definitely own up to it. We've had our wedding venue a long time. I have a lot of experience in operations of a wedding venue and the results you get when you have one. You cannot predict what you're going to do and what you're not going to do, because they'll show you different. You can't control crowds of people, can't be done. I'm not going to stand here and speak against this because I have a wedding venue, but I cannot recommend it. I'm going to do like Mr. Demossi's group and just stay neutral and let y'all make your decision. I thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next? Save your name and address.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Mark Beasley, I'm here with my wife, Rebecca. We live at 9627, lot number two. We closed on that home in August of 1987, and I think I'm correct in stating, our family has resided in Roanoke longer than any of the other ones that live there. So I know a little bit about the history of Roanoke and Riverside. Roanoke was created out of the Riverside property that was owned by the late Claude and Sarah Jones, who was a cattle farmer, and Ms. Jones was an antique dealer, and Roanoke was developed by Sally Snow and Howard Wall, and Sally was Claude and Sarah's This has been stated already, but Riverside has been a business before. Ms. Sarah operated Jones Antiques out of the old house and the old slave quarters. Riverside, after the Jones were passed, passed, Riverside became the home of Beverly Jones, who is here tonight. He is the son of Claude and Sarah. Beverly made several improvements on the property, including a beautiful rock patio fireplace fountain area out back, and I do remember that several weddings have been had here, along with outdoor photo shoots. Next at Riverside, we had the Stovars, who purchased it at auction from the Beverly Jones. The Stovars did major renovations on the house and the grounds also, and they hosted a wedding also there. That was wedding number 41 to be held at Riverside. So now on to today's owners, Ms. Stephanie. She has plans to continue to preserve the historic Riverside home, wanting to build that wedding chapel on the property. My wife and I, Rebecca, we have no problem with this, and I welcome it. We have several neighbors complaining with our main neighbor, Ms. Ramona DeSalvo, who informed us of this proposal by sticking a flyer on my mailbox, which I believe is illegal, and full of false information to begin with, which got a lot of people pretty upset to start with. I understand she probably has a petition with 50 or 60 signatures on it, and that's fine. You know, we all have our right to speak and say what we- You know, we all have our right to speak and say what we want. Operating this wedding chapel would take a large staff for many different occupations: florists, caterers, wedding planners, security, parking attendants, traffic control, bartenders, DJs, bands, and landscapers, to name a few. Am I done, sir?
Yes, sir, you're done.
All right, Joe. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. My name is Ramona DeSalvo, and I live at 9620 Roanoke, the property immediately adjacent to this proposed business. I am strongly opposed to it, and it's right outside my bedroom window. I have brought some exhibits. I'm also, by the way, speaking on behalf of a group of the neighbors. We've gotten together, and yes, we do have a petition that we've presented electronically. I've sent those to you, so I... Mr. Demasi, can they see these? Okay. Since then, we've even added one more. We have fifty-four people who actually live in the Roanoke subdivision that do not want this in their neighborhood, for all of the reasons that you're going to hear tonight. Couple of things I want to mention to you. That's that exhibit I have, the originals that added Andy Broadway, who's my neighbor to my immediate right of my house. First of all, Stephanie Maka does not own this property. It's owned by Billquist LLC, a California LLC located in Walnut Creek, California. That's Exhibit Two. Further, Stephanie Maka does not live on this property. She doesn't even live in this county. Her name is Stephanie Hemmari, and she lives with her husband Adele Hemmari at 2113 June Drive in Nashville, according to her driver's license, the property records in Davidson County, and the comprehensive background check I obtained through a licensed private investigator. She publicly claims to live there, but she does not. I live there, these neighbors live there, and we all know she does not. There are no lights on at night, there are no cars there, and the cars there may be once a week, and that would be the lawn service. Every now and then, she'll have a meeting there, but she does not live in that house. She told us in June that she had moved in three days before that June meeting. She did not. Her business name is Macavilla LLC, with a business address at the property. Her name on that, which is Exhibit Three, is Stephanie Hemmari. She is already advertising the wedding business, including on Facebook, with an email that says bookhistoricalriverside@gmail.com, and that was Exhibit Nine that I've included with your information. I also hired a professional engineer, Walter Davidson of Walter Davidson &amp; Associates, to prepare a hydrology report about the impact that this building and parking will have on my property that's immediately adjacent to it. As the report shows, her plan will cause a significant impact in the runoff on the site. Her proposed building, which is not a chapel, it's a large building that will seat one-hundred-and-fifty people. As the report shows, there will be an impact. Her proposed building will result in the compaction of soil and increased runoff over an amount that would occur naturally. When the unbehaved parking is wet and muddy, soil will be tracked out of the area. There is no plan offered for a system to offset the impact on hydrology, according to the engineer. The report is two pages long. It was written in August, when she submitted her first plan, and then it was updated October 3rd, so there are two reports. This is not an indoor facility. It is wide open with roll-up garage doors and outdoor patios. You could see it in the video, they're seating outside. There is no means to monitor or enforce the sound levels. When she was asked at the initial meeting about people being outside laughing, talking, smoking, and drinking, she just laughed and said, "Well, what's wrong with that?" But I can tell you what's wrong with that. I work sixty to seventy hours a week, and when I come home, I do not want to party outside my bedroom window on every Friday and Saturday night. I want to be home in peace and quiet, just like the rest of my neighbors want to. Her promised one hundred trees and that she would create a beautiful arboretum for the neighbors to enjoy has now changed to an eight-foot PVC wall. What is now green will be walled in with a plastic fence, and that will be my view and all of the neighbors' view. Exhibit Five is a picture that the... One of the neighbors provided, Kathy in Ulysses Grant, provided from the flood in last March. That was just following heavy rain. You can see the whole road, the property is right there to the left.
You have thirty seconds.
The road is flooded completely. I have a video that also, if you would allow me to play that, it shows the intersection at Roanoke. I paid a lot of money to get all this stuff to present to you on behalf of the neighbors. I also obtained a traffic incident report that shows that there's been fifty-four accidents in the short stretch of road between Arnold Road and Kindred Cove with serious injuries. In fact, lifelike landed in that field I just showed you and had to take people away to the hospital. But there's my house right there. This is not far off. This is not a great distance. This is a neighborhood. She made it look like you were out in the country on a hundred acres. There's my house, there's the wedding on you. If I could, could I allow that to play and then finish?
How much longer do you have?
Not much. I'm just about done.
I've given you extra time.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'll give you one more minute.
Okay. Do you want to see this, or...
Yeah, finish your video.
Oh, no narrating it, I just wanted you to see where the house is, but... Of particular importance, as you can see the traffic flow, this is a very dangerous intersection. It's hard to see in either direction, because there's dips on the northeast, the northwest side and the southeast side. And this car will illustrate it for you. This is what we face coming out of there. You can't see what's coming. And this car will attempt to pull out, and another car appears. I didn't plan this, it's just the way normal traffic is. And that's what happens routinely in both directions. So that's on the left-hand side, a deep dip where trucks come, and it is the Jefferson 500. These people go fifty-five and sixty-five miles an hour on this road. It's very dangerous. The last thing I want to say is that I don't have any objection to the history part, but I'm not fooled by it. That was just thrown in because to make it more appealing for the community. I don't care what the Davidson County Sheriff has to say about how great she is, this is not about her character. We've got nothing against Ms. Maka or Hemmari, but we do have something against having a wedding venue in the backyard with music, drunks, smoking, and noise. And we are relying on our common sense and our life experience, we're relying on the facts. People, including me, have lost sleep over this. I've spent a lot of money on this. It's stressing us all out that I just paid off my home in January.
Thank you.
And I can't take it anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, no. Next.
My name is Melba King, 1301 Randolph Street. We are next to homes bordering 1218 West Jefferson Pike. Under a PUD, the business the applicant intends to open is public-facing, with periods of intense activity generating increased traffic and noise. I will address noise concerns. All citations of claims come from the updated application, as I have it. From page eight, quote, "Soundproofing methods will obtain industry standard guidelines", end of quote. I work in audio production, and I've been in a lot of soundproofed rooms. Soundproofing means stopping sound waves from entering into and emanating out of a space. The industry standard method to soundproof utilizes room-in-room construction, that is one room inside another room. Each surface of each room approximately four to six inches in depth, utilizing specialty materials for stopping the movement of sound waves with an equal-depth airspace in between. That's the industry standard method to soundproof. That scheme isn't shown in the building plan as it sits. Page fourteen, "Music only permitted inside, will not exceed sixty-five decibels, and will end at ten. Amplified sound waves don't stay put inside a metal building or hard-surface building that isn't soundproofed, has reflective inner surfaces, floor-to-rafter windows, and according to the plan, garage-sized roll-up doors leading to outside seating. Sixty-five dB on the property doesn't mean the sound waves stop at the property line. Fences and trees provide only visual barriers, not sound barriers, barrier meaning obstacle that prevents movement, in this case, movement of longitudinal sound waves. And after sunset, there's a phenomenon called refraction that causes sound waves to travel farther. Music ending at 10:00 PM probably means realistically at least another hour, more likely two of goodbyes, and one more hug, and car doors opening and closing. Then you'll have the DJ and/or the band equipment loading out and the catering load out." Page twenty-three, "Events will be scheduled on the weekends. Projection is thirty to forty a year. A neighbor having to party twice a year is completely tolerable. Thirty to forty events at this business close to our homes, even on just the weekends, will be a disturbance to those of us who live nearby. In conclusion, in the surrounding overwhelmingly residential area, our homes are our retreats, our places of seclusion in which we relax and rest, and I would hope to keep it that way. Thank you."
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing your own timer up here, too. Next.
My name is Ralph Melton. Address, 1317 Randolph Street, Lot 19, Roanoke subdivision, for thirty-five years. Applicant plans to use existing on-property septic system sized for a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Applicant plans to add a wedding barn to existing septic system. This barn adds six toilets, two urinals, nine sinks, flowing liquids and solids into the existing septic system, plus an additional factor of a hundred attendees, eight employees, thirty to forty events per year, rendering the septic system ineffective and environmentally an environmental hazard for the property and neighborhood. Applicant has not provided the commission plans for a properly-sized septic system to date, nor a duplicate properly-sized system if needed, as required by Regulation 0400-48-01-03. Again, an environmental concern. Stormwater enters the applicant's property in the northeast area of property. The neighborhood ditch beside my home, carrying stormwater, is a significant-sized ditch and flows a substantial amount of runoff in significant rain events and flash flooding events which occur frequently. Located in this area of stormwater runoff are numerous survey stakes. I don't know what they are marking, but numerous stakes appear to be in the 500 and 100-year flood zones, per FEMA, that is the Federal Emergency Management Agency. I fear these stakes could possibly be indicating a possible septic and leach field. If so, this could carry environmental waste hazards into the east fork of the Stones River during flooding events. I oppose the rezoning request due to the very negative impact it will have on our neighborhood. I vote no to rezoning. 1218 West Jefferson Pike Riverside, from RM to PUD. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy George, and I live at 9007 Dandelion Drive. As a member of the Wildflowers Neighborhood and someone who respects that landowners should best determine how to use their property, I'm in support of this project. I ask that the county explore using the original driveway on the West Jefferson Pike instead of going onto Roanoke Drive. Given that each event is going to have two off-duty police officers controlling the traffic, it should make very little difference if they're directing traffic onto West Jefferson Pike or into Roanoke. Either way, the traffic volume's going to be the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Leach, and I live at 1238 Randolph Street here in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, in the Roanoke subdivision. I oppose the rezoning of 1218 West Jefferson Pike, identified as Tax MAP 36, Parcel 24.01 for several reasons. Primarily, this property is too small for the planned unit development. My husband and I moved to the Randolph Wildflowers area of Rutherford County in 2009 to be able to enjoy our forever home in a safe, peaceful, close-knit neighborhood. I've had the honor to participate in and attend several weddings hosted at different Rutherford County event venues. Of important note, these weddings were actually in the county, not the city. I can attest that noise, crowd, and traffic management are an issue. Currently, the average acreage for the Rutherford County-located venues is 22.79. Those venues do not adjoin neighborhoods or properties of privately-owned homes. The proposed Maka Riverside wedding venue abuts directly on private residential properties and is only 6.97 acres, which is almost sixteen acres smaller than the average Rutherford County wedding venue. In other words, this property, proposed property, is sixty-nine percent smaller than existing county-located venues. Because of a proposed wildflower garden to be located on half of the property, all wedding party members, invited guests, and workers who will include caterers, waitstaff, musicians, planners, wedding volunteers, and additional event personnel and their vehicles are going to be confined to using only half the property. The eastern part of the reserved-for-future development section identified on the 1987 Section 1 Roanoke subdivision, Plat Book 12, page 84, has been developed into privately-owned homes, and since 1218 West Jefferson Pike, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, is zoned residential, it should remain as just that, residential. I respectfully request that the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission vote no to the proposed planned unit development at 1218 West Jefferson Pike here in Murfreesboro. Please preserve our safe, peaceful, and quiet surrounding forever home neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alvin King, live at 1301 Randolph, just around the corner from the proposed venue. Thanks to the board for your time, I appreciate it. I'm opposed to this project for all the reasons expressed by my friends and neighbors. The proposal is tying together two separate ideas, a wedding retreat... The proposal is tying together two separate ideas, a wedding retreat and exhibit with history tours. As mentioned in historical exhibit, properly planned may be a great idea, an opportunity to preserve and utilize a local historical property. A wedding retreat with the traffic, noise, trash, overall disruption to the residential area is a bad idea. On page eleven of the proposal, it states there are many commercial properties in less than a mile from twelve eighteen West Jefferson Pike. And it also says, "The original deed displays clear language reserved for future development." I want to look at a couple of those statements. There's approximately forty-five houses, not counting the subdivisions, directly on Jefferson Pike between Rowan Oak and Highway eight forty. And there's about twelve homes between Rowan Oak and Walter Hill intersection. Six or more of those homes are brand-new construction within the last one to three years. The only commercial buildings in this stretch are the Mona Market at the corner of a major intersection of Mona Road, and there's one house next to that which I believe belongs to the store. McCormick Trucking at the intersection of eight forty is fairly new, it's right at eight forty. And across from that is a daycare facility, also at the eight forty intersection. In the proposal, there's several mentions of commercial properties. A car shop is mentioned. This car shop's in a pole barn. It's owned by a young man who works a full-time job. Evenings and weekends, he restores classic cars, one at a time, by himself. No noise, no traffic, no crowds. The storage unit, about a hundred parking spaces and some storage buildings, no nearby neighbors, no noise, no traffic, and no crowds. Mentioned the church. These past two Sundays, there's eight to ten cars in the parking lot of the church. Again, no traffic, no noise. The boat ramp is mentioned off Jefferson Pike, about a mile away. That really doesn't have much impact on us at all. There's an airplane hangar just down the road. In fifteen years, I've seen one airplane there in the hangar. It's a private grass runway. It's never a factor, no noise, no traffic, no crowds. The Christmas Tree Farm on Cut Off Road is mentioned. I went there. The Christmas Tree Farm has a sign. It opens mid-November, and I'm sure it closes by the end of December. Again, no noise, very limited traffic, and crowds for about maybe one month. The Marathon Gas Station is an exception, but they, again, have very few neighbors, nobody right directly behind them, and they close early evening. The reserve for future development statement, as mentioned, the last Randolph family to live in a house sold two large lots next door for homes to be built on, so I suggest that future development is residential. I reference that there's no landscaping plan as I read the...
Your time's up.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Curran. I'm at ten nineteen Harvest Grove Boulevard. I'm a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. And I'm going to tell you what I'm opposed to. I'm opposed to the development we've seen in Rutherford County that tear properties like this down. I'm opposed to how many homes and farms I've seen disappear because of development. What I'm for is someone, and I don't care where they're from, I don't care who owns it, to come in and want to bring people in to share what should be one of the most significant days in their lives at a historical property. There are so many other things that someone could have bought this seven-acre property and done, and she wants to preserve it and share it with somebody. It's unbelievable to me that people can't see past that. I've seen the plans, I've seen every dime that this person's going to put into it, and I'm for it because it preserves a huge part of Walter Hill.
Good evening. Name's Tim Guy. I live at one-eighty-seven Cut Off Road. And I'm for this. As my friend said, this lady's trying to preserve this house, and some of y'all that live over there in Rowan Oak, I don't hear anybody from Powell Chapel. We're talking about the house that used to live right there on Powell Chapel, home just like Ms. Stephanie has, and developed that property, they bulldozed that house under. If you look back there on that little road on Jefferson Pike, you'll still see one of the slave quarters. That house is now gone. I've seen her plans, but it's good. And they're going to do all this stuff. By the way, her plan is in the county, not the city. The Christmas Tree Farm, come over on Cut Off Road, you want to see some traffic, okay? To the lady that lives right there, the letter that you put out, and it says, "Say no to a pizza joint." Where'd you get your information? Ain't going to be a pizza restaurant, it's going to be a really nice wedding retreat, a wedding chapel. They went through a lot of time and trouble and expense to get up here and show y'all that this is going to be good. No to the noise, traffic, lights, litter. The other one, say no to crime. Where'd you get that from? Ma'am, you're the one that said it. Also, to the lady that put the flyers on the mailboxes, and I saw the gentleman over here, said that's illegal. Federal Code, US eighteen, US Code one-seven-two-five, says you cannot do that. The only crime I see that was committed here was when you put them letters on them mailboxes. You didn't tell the truth. You lied on Ms. Stephanie to get your support, and that's wrong. Tell the truth. The lady's got some good plans going on right there, and there's no reason she shouldn't have it. And Mr. Pierce, he should not be allowed to get up here and speak because he's a conflict of interest because he has one. Obviously, he doesn't want Ms. Stephanie to have hers because that's going to take business away from him. Y'all need to sit back and think about this. This lady's got something good going here. That house has been there since eighteen thirty. I shouldn't want to see her get upset and discouraged if we don't get to have this, and she sells that property to some developer who comes in and bulldozes that house down. And then it's gone forever. There's a house right over on Powell Chapel, right before Powell Chapel Baptist Church on the right. I think that's the other oldest house I know of, and I've lived out in Walter Hill for twenty-three years, and I've seen a lot of changes out there. What she has planned is good. It ain't going to be like y'all saying. And I think the planning committee, I hope that you vote in favor and give this lady that.
Good afternoon. My name is Opal Gillum, and I live at ninety-six nineteen Rowan Oak Drive, just across the street from Riverside. It's there. First, I, with permission, would like to quote Mr. Phillips in his opening remarks when he took over as chairman of our county commission. Rule of life: Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. What it doesn't say, he said, "Do unto others before they do unto you. Listen to all, seek others' input, and wait until we have listened thoroughly before we make decisions. They that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength; they shall mount up as wings on eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." His addition to this was, "Teach me, Lord, to listen and to wait. Be open-minded about your service; listen without judgment, and encourage without conditions. Look at what it is, not rumors of what people think it is," and that's what's been going on, is rumors. One day in early spring, my doorbell rang, and standing on my porch was a beautiful young girl with black hair and red lips. She had beautiful lips. She told me her business, and I invited her in. We had a very long conversation about what she had plans for at Riverside if approved. I told her it all sounded good to me, and I was glad to see someone who wanted to preserve the historical aspect of this place. I have lived in this neighborhood for thirty years, and I know what could have been done with it, torn down with several houses built on the grounds. Instead, she wants to keep it as a monument to Rutherford County's local history, to be preserved for future generations, not a grocery store, as one woman pulled in my driveway and suggested to me that that's what they do. Some of my neighbors who were opposed to this venture have left misinformed and notes containing untruths on my door, in my paper box, with ugly hateful text on my phone, simply because I was in favor of what Ms. Maka was trying to do. I firmly believe this matter has gone on for too long, and I would request that this body vote in favor of a zoning change. After all, Mr. and Ms. Jones had run a business there for many years. These people, Stephanie's family, are some of the nicest people you would ever want to meet, if you would only just give them a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you only went over twenty seconds because I wasn't about to pull the plug on you.
Good evening. My name is Amber Nichols and I live at thirteen twenty-six Randolph Street, which is within visibility of the back portion of twelve eighteen West Jefferson Pike. I live there with my husband and eight-year-old daughter. We moved into this home in two thousand and nineteen. The decision to move to Rowan Oak Estates was based heavily on the low volume of traffic and quiet aspect of a neighborhood with minimal outlets. The neighborhood is close enough to town but yet far enough away that we feel comfortable knowing that only people in our neighborhood are homeowners and their guests. For the young child, it is important to be aware of our surroundings. Our neighbors pay attention when they drive through the neighborhood. They slow down when we're walking or riding our bikes. Inviting a commercial business to a residential neighborhood does not make me, as a mother, feel safe or secure. Within the planned development criteria, it is presented that there is a projection of thirty to forty events a year with a maximum number of a hundred attendees. That is three to four thousand strangers entering our neighborhood each year. In addition to the exposure to non-residents, there is an added element of noise pollution that we are not interested in living near. I assume it is the business owner's intent to be profitable, and therefore, we could expect one to two events a week during peak wedding season. This means that every Saturday, we can expect not only the loud music of an event, but the sound of car traffic in and out of our neighborhood in the late evening hours after the ten PM music cutoff. There will also be noise from patrons congregating outside the venue to smoke, vape, or just get some fresh air. The events intended to be put on by Riverside Wedding Retreat are typically joyous, celebratory, exuberant, and festive. We could only expect the noise volume to be representative of these adjectives. Hooting, hollering, honking, whistling are all beautiful noises we use to show our excitement. However, I do not wish to live amongst these noises every day. The plan proposes the entrance to the venue be added to Rowan Oak Drive. Additionally, it mentions the traffic management indicated two off-duty officers to be present at each wedding event to direct cars safely to and from Jefferson Pike. I do not feel that I should, as a resident of this neighborhood, have my comings and goings be obstructed by the traffic of these events. The intersection of Jefferson Pike and Rowan Oak is already a dangerous one with a blind curve on one side and a steep grade on the other which impedes visibility. Multiple accidents occur at this intersection annually, and adding three to four thousand vehicles a year will only increase that. I can appreciate the Maka family's desire to fulfill a dream, but that dream should not come at the cost of residents of Rowan Oak Estates. We also had dreams, and we found a beautiful, quiet, safe location to live and raise our families. The addition of a wedding retreat with an entrance off of Rowan Oak Drive should not be approved. It is not in the best interest of the current or future residents of our neighborhood. I appreciate the ability to present my concerns. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Shernet Turek. I reside at ninety-seven eleven Rowan Oak Drive. My husband and I have lived in Rowan Oak for thirty-four years. Mark and Becky, we are some of the originals. We've lived through the hailstorms and the tornadoes. I would like for this planning commission to please consider that Carriage Lane Event is four blocks from here. Four blocks from this courthouse, and they are doing the same thing that we are asking to bring to ours and to preserve the history. If Carriage Lane can have theirs, why can't we have ours? If traffic is such an issue and such a dangerous section, then why did T.D. allow the in and out of Rowan Oak to start with? Why was it not corrected before being put in? Why is it being brought up now? We need to preserve history, and we need people to stop and think. Let people live and let live. That's what's wrong with a lot of us today. We feel that we have the right to tell people what they can and cannot do, or can and cannot We need to remember the history is the reason why we're here, and we need to keep that. And we need to live and let live. I believe this venue, I am very in favor for it, and I believe that it'll be good for the community. It will bring good. I don't understand why there's so much controversy over something. We're going, this place is going to bring love, joy, and laughter, which is completely opposite of what we're seeing tonight. And we need to remember that. We need places that bring love, laughter, and joy, and preserve our history at the same time.
Good evening. My name is Cody Nichols, and I live at thirteen twenty-six Randolph Street. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I know this is not the most enjoyable thing in the world, but we're all here doing it. My family and I moved here three years ago, and it was for the peaceful country setting. Prior to moving here, I spent ten years in the fire service and retired as a lieutenant in two thousand and nineteen. With my years in the fire service, I have several concerns... With my years in the fire service, I have several concerns with the proposed business at 1218 West Jefferson Pike. Our section of the neighborhood is currently serviced by two hydrants. I say "our" section, that is Randolph Street. Serviced by two hydrants, one of which being on the 1218 property, and it is currently inaccessible due to the hedge row that is in front of it. The addition of a parking lot is not going to ease access to this hydrant. In reviewing the proposal, I see no fire lanes in the parking lot for emergency access. The current property as it sits presents a very heavy fire load and adding further structures will only add to this. Reading the proposal, it is stated there will be historic tours, which I'm for. I love the fact that you want to save the historic aspect. And overnight accommodations for the bride and groom. Nowhere does it talk about emergency egress routes, emergency exits, one-way push bar sprinkler systems, and emergency warning stations such as pull stations. The proposed barn is shown built up against a large hedge row. In the end of an emergency during dry conditions, this puts all of our homes at risk. Having worked many commercial and residential fires in my 10 years of service, I see considerable unnecessary risk with the 1218 West Jefferson property if the proposal is to move forward. Thank you. I am against it.
Hello. My name is Debbie Short and I live at 1246 Malvern Drive. That's about three streets over from the proposed wedding venue. Now, I'm just a country girl and I'm fixing to talk some country to y'all, okay? They say quiet. It's not quiet. We live in the county. We got four-wheelers. We got golf carts riding around. We got a dog by our house that barks from the minute I walk outside to the minute I go in. We have children screaming. It's the county and we love it. We had a neighbor, and he passed away a couple of years ago, and we love him, but he had a race car. Every Saturday, you know, that race car was going to start up and you were going to hear it for about two hours. Just the way it was. Two of my neighbors on the street, they work on cars. I hear drilling all the time. I feel like I'm at the dentist office, okay? Quiet, it's not. Lovely and beautiful place to live, it is. Great neighbors, yes. Anybody that knows me knows I'm quiet, mind my own business. I worked at Nissan. I do know about the traffic, but 840 did help that out. When Stephanie first sent out a thing, I asked Stephanie, "Have you got to know your neighbors? Have you talked to them?" So she invited us to her house and we all had hamburgers. Since that, I asked Stephanie, "Do you live here? Are you planning on living here?" So, one day, I texted her and she was at Publix shopping right down the road to bring her groceries evidently. I'm hoping right back home since she's about two miles from her house. She come right over. I gave her a tour because I have horses and all that, okay? So, does she live there? I think she does. I don't know for sure, but I've texted her a couple of times and she, you know, she's asked for me to come down. I've seen her in the yard and all that. So, I'm going to say she lives there. Do I want the wedding venue? I do. I think it's going to be beautiful. I think it's not going to be any noiseier than anything else I've heard for the, I've been here since 1996, okay? It's the country. But should we all love each other and get along? Yes. If we have problems, do I think she'll fix them? I do. I think if there's anything that anybody needs, just tell her and I think that she will fix it. So, I'm for it and thank y'all.
Anyone else?
My name is Beverly Jones. I owned Riverside up until about three and a half years ago. I was so grateful when I heard that Stephanie had bought it and wanted to preserve the house. I'd sold it when I lived there to a very nice couple, family, and I was so happy because I didn't think there would be a family that was interested in taking it on. And they were interested for about two years. And he called one day and said, "I really hate to tell you this, but we're going to sell Riverside. It's just too much." And I said, "Don't apologize to me. I know all about it." I lived there for 15 years previous to that, my parents before that. It was a commercial business then. I'm not sure it was zone commercial, but zoning laws were not quite as strict when they had it as they are now. Thing about it is, my entire family was so happy to hear that somebody was moving into it and turning it into a venue because venues preserve old homes. You've got Oakland's, Marymount, several houses in this county that have been preserved simply because they are venues. Of course, in the case of Oakland, there's also a big organization that supports it. But I know people look at these old places that used to be and say, "Oh, where did it go? Why didn't they save it? Who is 'they'?" In this case, it's Stephanie. And my family was very grateful to hear that she wanted to do that, even more so after we met her and talked to her about it. My sister and niece were supposed to be here also tonight, but they both tested positive for COVID. I haven't been around them, so don't worry. I do well to talk to them on the phone every now and then, but... My great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather bought the place in 1865, just as the Civil War ended. It has had five owners in my family in a line for the last 156 years. And while I don't live in the community anymore, I have always lived in Walter Hill for almost 75 years now. And I miss it, but it got to a point that seven acres mowed of mowing every week and a house that size to try to keep up with when you live alone is just quite a chore. And then I had heart attack and I just thought, "I gotta do something. I gotta get out of here." I didn't want to sell it, but that's why I did.
Time's out.
Okay. Don't hurt me. At any rate, I would like to see her be able to do this.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight? My name's David Brown with Honky Tonk Construction and I would like to go through some of the things that I've heard tonight, primarily some of the complaints. It seems like the most important thing that everybody's concerned about is the noise. In my experience, as a general contractor, I've worked in both commercial, residential, industrial, large events. So, we've done work for Bonnaroo. We've done work for the local community in Nashville with the event venues. So, building something that's going to be able to help with the noise is something that we do have experience with. I've also heard septic was something that came up. I mean, these are all preliminary. I've built a lot of things and I know that you can't build anything that's not to code. Sewer sanitary management's going to take a look at it. You guys have also brought up traffic is a really big issue. I think that apparently stands beyond whether there's going to be a venue built here or not. So, if there's really that big of a problem, I advise you guys to keep taking that up somewhere else. One lady mentioned garage doors. We've actually removed those from the plans. Historic preservation, I'm sorry, that's not a complaint, my bad. Fire safety was the last one that came up. Once again, I mean, the building's not going to be allowed to be built to not be fire safety. I mean, let's just be honest, guys. Outside of that, stormwater, at least here recently in Davidson County where most of our work is, we work every day with Metro Stormwater. And in my experience, all the stormwater plans that they provide to, or at least require us to do, usually leaves the situation better than it was before we even got there. So, I don't see Rutherford County being any different in their compromise in terms of the water control. Outside of that, just to touch a little bit on the noise control, you know, we can do acoustic tiles. We can do special foam insulation for the walls. There's actually even paint caulking that helps with the acoustics of the building. And also, there's windows and doors that can help with the acoustics. I'm not sure what kind of weddings that some of the people may have been to, but I know at least the ones I've been to are, for the most part, extremely calm, joyous, and a loving scenario. I've never been to a wedding that was, it seems like you guys maybe think it's going to be a rock concert or a hip-hop venue, but that's not what Ms. Stephanie is planning on building here. And for the last part, I don't know how much time I have left. I lost count here, but I'd just like to speak on the character of Ms. Stephanie and how I even know her. I met her at her pizza business in Nashville several years back and she is a tenacious woman. I don't know if you know her outside of this room here tonight, but she is not going to back down. The way she run that restaurant and the character that she brought in there with her family, I know she's going to bring that same love to this building. I personally feel honored to even be able to be considered to build it. I've done work for her family on different things for their other properties and I'm just here to let you guys know that whatever happens on the property, we're going to make sure that it's built to all local, county, state regulations. And she has made a lot of compromises. I haven't seen any other ones tonight, but we're going to do what we can.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Michael Jacobson. I live at 1333 Randolph Street and we have the, share the longest property line with 1218. And we've only been here, though, we're newcomers to Tennessee. We've only been here since 2009. And we were welcomed to Tennessee, though. A house across the street from us was blown down in a tornado and in BJ's field, a woman was airlifted out and she later died from an accident on Jefferson Pike. And when we tried to come up here, the realtor said, "You can't make it. The Jefferson Pike is flooded. You'll have to wait a while." So, we've experienced a few of these things, but the reason why I'm going to speak is I'm a combat wounded veteran. I'm 100% permanently disabled and I'm very sensitive to noise. I hardly ever leave the house and my son has planted more than 50 trees and we have a lodge, all the trees there, and a fence, a wooden fence, to hold down on the noise. And we live on a no-outlet street. And my son has even put up signs for the children to go slower because there are children playing. Because people were coming down to go to Dandelion and coming through Randolph. So, I'm opposed to this primarily because of the noise. We moved here because I'd only be a few miles away from the VA, which gives me great care. And so, we're coming from Florida and I don't drive anymore, so the driving on Jefferson Pike doesn't affect me and it doesn't affect me on cutoff or Roanoke, but the noise does affect me. I don't know that I'd be able to stay with excessive noise. There was one wedding there, the previous owners had a huge party, I don't know if it was a wedding, and the police came and we didn't call them because the confrontation has gone out of me. I don't have that in me anymore. I just want peace. And I like to sit in the yard and have peace and I just can't handle the noise anymore. And so, I hope you'll reject this venue and, but I do like the idea that they're going to seek to preserve the house, which BJ did a tremendous job in preserving the house. We worked hard. I used to say to him, and I said, "You only mow the grass on days ending in a Y." So, he worked really hard and he's the same age as I am, so it's, I know how difficult it is. But thank you all for the consideration and for allowing me to speak. And one other thing, I want to thank the county for putting combat wounded parking spaces in front of the building. Several places in Rutherford County have them, but it's not that many. And I was so happy to see that the courthouse has added a couple, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Hello. My name is Tasha Young. My husband and I live at 10001 Roanoke. And I can honestly say, we've been here since 88 and this is the first time I think I've ever been completely discouraged for even living in Roanoke. We have a few good neighbors, but there's so many of you sitting back there smirking, "We're against it. We're against it. We're going to get her." Y'all aren't even thinking about the American dream. This woman wants to make her life better and in doing so, she is preserving history. But y'all are, why I don't understand you want to be so negative to her, to what could be something great for Walter Hill itself. We are part of Murphysboro, yes. We're a very small community. I know a couple of you that have had businesses in your residence. Won't point fingers, but I guarantee I will later on. I am for this. I hope that Ms. Stephanie really gets this. She deserves it. She deserves to live the American dream and to be able to prosper.
Good evening. I wouldn't plan on speaking tonight, but after seeing everything and hearing everything, I am for this. I've lived in Roanoke 32 years on Roanoke Drive. My kids and I used to walk down to the Joneses' house. We knew his grandparents. She'd play the piano and she'd show us all her antiques. And it's just a home And it's just a homestyle area. I've known Beverly for a long time. I've worked on the Roanoke sign that nobody wants to take care of. I painted it. My husband has planted stuff there, and nobody has gotten off their butt to come down there and help. So you care about Roanoke, but I don't see it. I am for this, and I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Watkins. I live in Walter Hill. I've been there pretty much all my life in that community. My parents, my grandparents own property there. I live there in Walter Hill. I am for this because I feel like that it will be good for the Walter Hill community. The venue, the wedding venue, as well as preparing and preserving the history there. I know the Randalls, like I said, have been there, the Joneses, the halls, the walls as well, and everything. So I'm just grateful to Stephanie wanting to preserve that history. I went out there and I visited the place, and I was just really impressed to see those enslaved cabins there. I worked with Dr. Van West from Middle Tennessee State University on different events and everything, and we want to preserve that. Like I said, put artifacts within that, those log cabins. I really want to be one of those that bring people in to tour that plantation. We're not only hers, we're looking in Rutherford County to see how many plantations still exist because it is history. You know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, but I am there. I am for preserving that history, and I admire her for buying that. And like you said, you know, these subdivisions are coming in and just, I mean, it's okay because people, Rutherford County is growing. That's how we get our money. That's how we get our revenue, people moving in. And I appreciate her wanting to do that in the community because I think it'll really be good for the Walter Hill community. I don't live in Rolling Oak. I live, I don't live too far from it. My heart went out when the tornado I went through there. It affected our church, which is not too far from that area and everything, but I feel like it would be a good thing for the community itself. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Monica Schuster. I live at 9906 Roanoke Drive with my husband and our two children, and I am appalled by all of my neighbors here. I cannot believe you guys would treat this woman this way. She's trying to bring something good and hopeful to our neighborhood. She's trying to keep things around for our children. And why you would want to break this woman down and tear her apart, I have no understanding of that. And I am for this. I am for her, and I support you, Stephanie.
My name is Ray Roth, and I live at 1418 Lila Drive, which is on the west side. But I'm here to speak about the Makas and their character. They're a loving, happy family. I've known them for several years, both in business and personally. Like the construction company said, I mean, if something, they just take care of business. I mean, if something is not right, they'll fix it. I mean, happily, they're loving. I own a couple of properties in Rutherford County, and we lived in Williamson County for 14 years and just moved here to Rutherford last year, and we love it here. One of our properties is across from a wedding venue, Saddlewood on the west side, on Franklin Road. I've been outside at our property there when they're having, you know, wedding venues. And, you know, it's a little bigger property, but there's a mountain behind it, and it all projects to us. And, you know, it's not as bad as I think people think as far as noise and everything. I think, you know, there's, there's been a lot of concerns as far as codes, anything codes, I mean, Doug will, you know, they'll, they'll address it and take care of it. And, you know, I'm, I'm here, and I support them, and I think this project should go through. It's good for business in Rutherford County, and they're, the only way to preserve, you know, these historical homes is with money to do it. And in order to get that, you know, a wedding venue's perfect, and there's several around the county, and, you know, I just think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Can we have your name, please?
My name is Ulysses S. Grant Vaughn. I live 107 Honeysoho Court, Murfreesboro. Been here in Rutherford County for many years. I moved here for the school system, the churches, and what he's got Rutherford County to offer. I love it. I was born and raised in Nashville. When we lived, I had some best friends, and it was here. Everything I ever dreamed of is in Rutherford County. Been here for over 40 years. This thing that they offer right here, I'm against every piece of it. The reason I'm against it, it's an 100-year, 105-year flood plan. And what they was talking about building right there in this wedding venue, she's talking about all the good things that it was going to be. Said, "Oh, well, this place, you got this and that." And it's got a step system, septic system there, and 105-year flood plan, all this step system, and it floods every year. And we give this people the programs, film, of water going all over that. I live very close to it. When this goes, if it goes, and the water goes over it, if a co of engineers okays it, and a Rutherford County Commission okays it, are they going to be responsible when this step system, that water goes over it? It's automatically going to dump out over the plane. I worked for the federal government for nine years, eight years. I worked, go through the Supreme Court representing people. This is wrong. I live right down the street from my grandkids, and my family is here. And you dump the septic system out on the ground. Who's going to be responsible? All you people, I beg you. Please don't let this happen. Thank you for your time.
My name is Carolyn Melton, and I live at 1317 Randolph Street. I was originally going to talk about the possibility of alcohol at the facility and things that could happen because of too many drinks. I know Ms. Maka told us at the meeting at the country club, I mean, the golf club, that it would be two-ticket limit. However, I've been at parties before, and people that didn't drink just gave their tickets to somebody else. So I can see it can get out of hand because I've watched it. The main thing I'm up here for right now is to tell you that this is not personal towards you. You are more than welcome to live there. We love the idea of preserving this facility. It's the wedding venue. It's the things that it can bring, it's the traffic that it can bring. So therefore, I vote no.
Well, I can't compete with a name like Ulysses S. Grant, but I was going to go after him. My name is Sebastian Jacobson. I live at 1333 Randolph Street, and I have the privilege and the honor of taking care of the combat wounded veteran that you heard just before, who has three Purple Hearts, a Silver Star, and a Bronze Star from Vietnam. We moved here from Boca Raton, Florida, and the first person we met was Beverly Randolph Jones. And I could honestly say that he was the nicest, most generous person that we have ever met in our entire life. He gave us that piece of property that you see right there on that map, right there, that whole stretch, and we've done nothing but clean the garbage out of it where neighbors were dumping garbage, whoever they were, we don't know. But we cleaned it up. We planted fruit trees, many more fruit trees than there were there. We took the pears that were there. We gave BJ the preserves. We gave him eggs. I've spent more time working on 1218 Randolph, I think, than anybody that's seated here except Beverly Randolph Jones. He did an impeccable job taking care of that place, and when he asked me to help, I was honored, and it was a privilege to take care of Riverside. I love the place. I built those hurricane, those shutters that are on the front of that house that Stephanie took a picture of. I rebuilt the posts that are part of the slave quarters, that when you drive up to the place, you see these six posts. They're absolutely gorgeous, even though BJ said, "I'm not going to pay to rebuild those." And I said, "BJ, you got to do it." And I said, "I don't even want you to pay me. I'll do it for nothing because it's got to be done." Because he was auctioning the house. And we were so upset that we were going to lose him as a neighbor. I kept very close contact with him until this situation. It has divided us. It has divided the neighborhood like you would not believe. It's terrible. It's absolutely terrible what has happened in our neighborhood. And I'm sure you can hear the passion in my voice. So my job is to take care of my dad. I'm his full-time caregiver. I live with him. I've given up my life to take care of somebody else. And that's what Jesus said, "No greater love have any man than to give up his life for his friend." And my dad is my friend, and I have given up my life for him. So when he tells you that he is mortified of this situation because of the noise, and then they tell you, "Oh, we're going to do this and this," and it's been beautiful out right now. It's been absolutely beautiful. You're not going to tell me that people are going to stay inside a barn when it's beautiful outside. They're going to be outside, they're going to be talking. We're going to hear clanking dishes. We're going to hear car doors slamming. We're going to hear van doors slamming. We're going to, whatever, roll-up doors. I don't know what's going to happen, but it's not going to be good. We hear everything that happens at that house. She had some people over on Sunday. At 4:15, there were sirens that were going on Jefferson Pike. And I said to myself, "I wonder what it feels like for them to hear those sirens," because I believe that's why BJ moved. He couldn't take the noise from Jefferson Pike going through his living room. And I've been at that house. I've heard the noise. So I'm passionately opposing this whole Maka Villa. This was Maka Villa to begin with, and now all of a sudden, it's Riverside Wedding Retreat. And all of a sudden, we're talking about preserving the property. BJ did a wonderful job preserving the property, and he was able to, and he didn't even have a job. He had his pension, and he was retired. And I helped him, so I know what it takes to preserve a property like that. And Stover spent a lot of money to restore that house. It's been restored. It's waiting for a family to move in. And I don't believe she lives there because the definition of a neighbor is somebody who dwells near you, and we've never seen her stay there overnight. This is preposterous. I believe she's a savvy businesswoman that sold her business, Joey's House of Pizza, for $2.5 million in Nashville, bought a house for a million, wants to spend another half million on a barn, and it's great. If I had a dream, I would be all for it, but there's 70 houses there.
Time's up.
So please, consider us, and consider my combat wounded father. We are the closest, we, Doug said 65 feet from that wedding barn. I believe it's more like 40.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you. I'm going to speak for me and my wife. Back in 1985, when I started my career building houses, I built some of the first houses in Roanoke. And I'm going to tell you right now, we talk about a plantation, a plantation's not seven acres. Takes a lot more to make a plantation, okay? If Claude Jones and his wife were not alive at that time, there'd be houses from Roanoke where that house is now because that family has cannibalized that entire farm for miles and miles, all the way down to grandson John Jones Jr.'s building houses on the whole family farm. I was one of the first ones to buy lots in there, paid $6,000 apiece for lots in there, okay? That was a long time ago. I lived in there. I lived in there for a long time. Then I met my wife, and she happened to live there. She was one of the first ones there. I built the house next door to hers. And now her and I are married, and I've lived there for the past 21 years. She's lived there. She was the ninth house. She tells me all the time, ninth house, okay? So now the brass tacks. The meeting that we had, the open meeting she had, okay? Those two gentlemen there that are talking, they weren't there. They were not at the meeting. So they've just, they're just guys coming in. You live on part of that historic family farm in Harvest Grove and wherever, and on Powell Chapel Road, you live in on that neighborhood. So the historic thing kind of goes away. I mean, you stand up here and you're pointing fingers at all of us that live in that neighborhood, and you live three miles away? Hey, man, the, the Christmas tree farm's only open a couple of months. This is going to be 52 weeks a year in our backyard. I spent $35,000, put a store, put a screen porch and fireplace and everything on the back of my house. The only place that my wife got rest and quiet when she was going through cancer was on that back porch. And when this happens, that's gone, okay? It's gone. This guy over here that's going to build the place, apparently he's never been to Rutherford County and done anything because that man's not going to tell you anything about the codes. That lady right there runs the codes department. I've been building here for 40 years, okay? So you didn't keep it in the community. You went outside the community to hire a contractor, okay? The driveway, where we see the driveway, their driveway, it's, it's, I got the numbers, I got the footages, 90, it is 98 feet from the center of her driveway to the center of Roanoke. 98 feet. Why does it have to come out on Roanoke Drive? Why? Because she doesn't want to have to pay for turn lanes, and she doesn't want to have to pay for traffic studies. That's going to impede me day in and day out, okay? Doesn't matter because I, I'm self-employed. I go home a lot, okay? She says she lives there. She must either ride with Santa Claus in the things on the roof, or she drives an invisible car. Because I drive by there 10 times a day, night, and she is never there, okay? She does not live there. She does not live there.
Anyone else? Public comments is closed. Commissioners?
There have been some topics, and I've tried to list them here, this septic system and the drainage. All of those things will be covered according to code and the site plan. Is that not correct?
If this were to be approved, then they would have to submit an engineered site plan, which would entail going over all what you just mentioned. They'd have to have their state permits for septic, they would have to have their drainage plan approved by our engineering staff. And the gentleman spoke was correct. I don't handle building codes, I'm not smart enough for that. Our building code director, Tanya Bell, would handle that, and our fire marshal, Josh Sanders, would handle the fire code issues.
Emergency access would also be...
That would be part of that review with the building and fire codes. That's correct.
That leaves a couple of things that I've made note here, and that's the noise, and I'm not 100% sure that that could be thoroughly corrected, but that would also be part of the building plan. Is that right?
Well, as far as any soundproofing and everything, now, they do have to abide by the standards and our zoning ordinance on the performance standards as far as decibels, discernible noise at the property line. It doesn't just come right out and say you can't hear zero noise, but there are limits that you have to abide by.
And I guess the major thing that a lot of folks have brought up deals with traffic, and I understand that road, the other part of Jefferson Pike on the other side of 840 to Smyrna is being, of course, improved. What are the plans for this side of 840? Does anyone know?
The plans on our thoroughfare plan, they do show five lane going all the way, eventually all the way out to last Cassis, even going to east Jefferson Pike. Now, considering how long it took to get the portion that's under construction now actually built, you know, I don't have a timeframe. That would be a state project, because West Jefferson Pike, you know, 266, that is a state road, so that would be a state project, and I'm not aware that this is even on their radar screen right now.
I understand. I think that Jefferson Pike has been on the tenure plan for the last 40 years, and it probably won't be improved in my lifetime. As far as the traffic flow, in your estimation, would police officers help that situation? I think the lady that showed all of the video as it related to traffic, would traffic control by police officers help that situation?
I think it would. I mean, obviously, as we said during our initial staff comments, and obviously I don't want to speak for Mike, I'll let him speak for himself, but one of the biggest concerns we had was traffic. That's why we were so concerned about what the plan was for getting people on and off the property. Having a couple of officers there, I mean, that certainly can't hurt the situation that someone's out there actually directing the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to piggyback off Chairman Phillips's, a couple of his questions. Let's start with traffic, and Mike, let me ask this specifically to you. Would it be, in your opinion, more beneficial to keep the entrance on Jefferson as opposed to flipping it to the side like they have it currently drawn up?
Right. Well, when we first looked at this, we had some issues with line of sight, sight distance in this, the driveway, looking to the left coming out of the driveway, if I can get it to work. You have a good sight distance looking back towards Lebanon Pike, but the other way, you do not. There's a hill that, on the other side of Roanoke Drive, that kind of blocks cars as they're coming up over the hill, so it's kind of a limited view. Now, if you were to come up to Roanoke, it's better looking to the west. You can see better there. It's still a little bit of a hill, but you can see much better. The problem is right there, you miss, you lose traffic going around this curve. So that was one of the things that we had a lot of heartburn about was having people coming in and out safely. So what we recommended, that they come out on Roanoke to limit the additional conflict points on Jefferson Pike. And then when they had the idea to have sheriff deputy here and at Jefferson Pike, I thought that would help control traffic better with Roanoke being a collector street, allowing traffic to come there, instead of having an additional... Let me see if I can find it. Instead of additional conflict point real close to Roanoke and having the site challenges there. So that was our thought, to be able to funnel everybody through Roanoke, coming and going, block this off, so you only have the guests coming in and out Roanoke. So we were trying to limit the conflict points.
Okay, so even the residential driveway is going to be gone, right?
They're going to block it off. They're going to close it off during the event.
Just for... Okay, so it will stay there?
They will keep using it as a residential drive for their own purposes, but as far as event traffic, it won't be used for that.
Okay, so, you know, anytime you have an event, a lot of times, you'll have traffic from setup crews, catering, things like that, and that'll start mid-morning, if not earlier. So would you have, surely you wouldn't have officers at 10:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night every weekend out there. So there's going to be a certain amount of traffic impact starting early in the morning, and that's what I'm concerned about. Do you allow the personal driveway still to be open for catering and service vehicles to come in, or do you force everything to the new entrance? And if so, you know, what do you do when you have vans and caterers and equipment and things like that coming in? That is a concern of mine, starting mid-morning.
The applicant might be able to... I don't know her plans. If you can allow her to come back up and explain that, but that's one of the things that we would have to look at closely on a site plan, is where the catering staff, the table rentals, whatever, that's coming and going, the food vendors.
All right. One more question, as Chairman Phillips brought up, in terms of noise. And Doug, I'm asking you, and really Tanya, too. Do we, does this body have the power to request or require? The contractor referenced the ability to add foams, certain kinds of windows, to really absorptive material for the sound inside the building. Do we have the power to make that a part of the motion?
Well, this is a plan development, so you are allowed to place conditions, reasonable conditions, upon the approval of a plan development. Something like that could be added into the pattern book. Now, as far as the specifics of what that might look like, you know, I'm not a sound engineer, I'm not going to pretend to understand what that entails, but to answer your question, is that something you can condition? Yes, with a plan development, you can.
Okay, because I do have concerns about the outside sound. One of the ladies that spoke, who was the sound engineer, she's exactly right. The trees and the, if a PVC fence was proposed, those are not really sound barriers. So, you know, there are absorptive or reflective sound fences, but it's not the kind of fence you would normally see around a piece of property that we're familiar with. There would be some costs associated with that, but those products are out there, available on the market. And if we were to really pursue this, we may want to even put that in the motion as well, or part of the PUD. It would have to be some kind of an absorptive sound fence for a lot of reasons, but that's it for my questions at this point.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair, I have some questions for engineering staff, I think mostly. This property drains, all the drainage is to the river, I am assuming, because the river's very close by.
Yes, sir.
All right, so then, I would assume that Roanoke, the neighborhood behind it, would generally flow across or very near this property, and this property does not drain that way? Would that be generally correct?
Right.
One of the concerns was the floodplain in the septic area. What concerns are there with a... Of course, I realize you're not the environmentalist, and that's a state thing, but in your experience, what effect... I'm assuming that they'll have to upsize the septic system a little bit, and with that assumption...
Yes, sir.
Does the floodplain affect that?
State allows septic systems in floodplains, and also, which shocks me, in sinkholes. But that's a state law, they allow that. That's where all the good soil settles, in these low areas over time. So if you have an extended rain event where water stands on a septic system, there are some houses where you can't flush. But I don't know if it stays up long enough in this area to cause that same problem. I mean, there's, this house, this property has got a lot of good soil on it. All this yellowish-goldish is suitable for septic systems. So there's, it's covered up with good soil. You've got Harpeth, Cumberland, Armor, Lomond back here, so there's good soils all over. I mean, you don't have to put it just down in this area that floods, you could put it up higher to protect it.
Okay. Someone brought up in the public comments a number of accidents that they believe had occurred in that area. I don't recall what that number was. It was pretty high, but it certainly did not coincide with our accident reports, which are 2017 to 2021. Are there accidents that occur? I mean, mine shows no serious accidents, no fatal crashes, and 11 crashes since that period, all minor. Some of those were deer. In fact, most of those were deer, people running off road and ditches, hitting shrubs, whatever. Is, are there accidents that occur that we are not familiar with?
Well, let me pull up, well, this is what I put in the agenda packet. Now, this is 2017 through 2021. Now, the data that Ms. Salvo, I believe it was, and I'll pull her data up here in just a minute. She had, she got, went back a little further in time than I did. Now, generally, when I do these maps, I try to do it roughly, say, about a half a mile, like a radius around, so it's catching these ones that are here. And you can see in 2017, there was 1, 2, 1, 3, 4, just in this little area right here. Now, if you go to her data, let me pull this up here. Let me zoom in on this just a little bit, so you can see this a little better. Now, you can see that, first of all, she went back to 2012. Now, the app I was using went back to 2017. That's what I had. So she's catching, first of all, more years of accidents. The second, she's looking a little further in each direction than I typically do on these. She's going about, she was going from Kindred Cove, which is a real small private road, to the northwest, to Arnold Drive, which is to the southeast, going toward Lebanon Pike. That's about 1.3 miles. I measured it a little earlier today. So these aren't exactly the numbers I provided, the numbers she has, they're not apples-to-apples comparison, because hers is a little wider range than what she gave, than what I gave her. Excuse me.
Mr. Cushing, are you still needing to... I need to... Anything else from our applicant's engineer, or anything that you are needing? Have a request from applicant's engineer. Can you come forward?
Thank you, Commissioner, Matt Taylor. I've talked to my client. I think there was a couple of questions about possibly adding into the PUD about sound absorption. Maybe the better way to do that is that we would just commit to hiring a sound engineer to conduct a sound study that would accompany our site plan to show that we're going to comply with the county's noise ordinance, if that would be an acceptable solution to this body. I think that us hiring them, instead of us trying to predict what the best way, we let the engineers tell us the best way to contain that noise inside the building, we could do that at the site plan stage. And as far as catering staff, she did indicate that the police would get there roughly an hour or so ahead of the event time, so they would not capture the event, the catering staff, because she did think that that would be limited to, say, five or 10 vehicles based on the size of the wedding venue that would come. So it'd be a relatively small number of people entering or exiting during that time. And on the septic side, we have already had our soil scientist, Mr. Randy Dickerson, out to the site. He's identified an abundance of soil that seems to confirm what the general soils map that Mr. Hughes put on the screen earlier. So we do have an abundance of soil for a septic system for this facility.
Floor is open. We've heard from everybody, I think, in the building tonight, and we appreciate you being here, expressing your opinion. Mr. Cushing.
To break the silence, I will make a comment.
I'm starting to hear crickets up this way.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to approve, but I have a list of mandates. And Doug, I guess I'll lean to you as to whether these would be part of the motion or if these would be later down the road as site plan comes in, okay? I just want to get these out on the record, that these would be concerns and something we would have to lean on and look at as the site plan comes. One is, we've talked about, this is a weekend-only kind of a business. Is that right?
At least the venue, or the, excuse me, the main events are concerned. Now, the tours would be Monday, Tuesday.
Okay. We would need to get that in writing, right? And then, secondly, you know, Matt Taylor just talked about a sound engineer. You know, that's all well and good, but our requirements on sound, to me, are not very stringent. So a report is great, but I may want personally, I may want something more restrictive than what a sound engineer might come up with in terms of outdoor noise. So somehow, I want the ability to be able to look at that report and decide whether that's adequate enough, because this county does not have fines for, or it does not have a code for noise. I have fought that for years and years to no avail. So if there was a noise problem, there's not a whole lot we can do about it. So I'm very cautious about that. And for a final approval, I want to make sure that whether we have a noise engineer's report or not... report or not, we... I want this to meet more than just what our county standards would be. And if that means if we are in a PUD and we can put more restrictions on it, like windows, insulation, absorptive fence, reflective fence, something like that, if that's not in the engineer's report, I still may want to make that part of my motion. Or if it comes to a site plan approval, that will be part of my motion then. I think we talked about the cabins being open for bride and groom stayover. Did I hear that right? I thought there was some overnight... I thought there was some overnight talk.
I think the overnight accommodations are actually in the house, not in the cabins. They're nodding to the affirmative.
Okay. The cabins are just for dressing, getting dressed, staging, that kind of stuff?
No. The exhibits, yeah. It's for the history part, the exhibits.
Okay. I thought I heard something about the bride and groom or part of the wedding party had the ability to spend the night.
Yeah, well, you do. That is part of it, but they'd be spending the night inside the main structure.
Inside the main house.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, but that wouldn't be open to the entire wedding party? That would just be...
Yeah, the pattern book states bride and groom, and the regulations for retreats in our ordinance are specific, that it's only to be offered in association with the actual event, not just for general public. So it's only for that.
I guess where I'm going is, I don't want the whole wedding party to crash the place.
You just want bride and groom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And I think the neighbors would not want the whole wedding party to crash the place as well. I really think... The noise is my big hangout. And again, I want to reemphasize, our regs are not that great on sound, and a sound engineer might come with some great ideas, but if he says X, I may want X-plus. And I want to be... I want myself or this committee to have the ability to enforce the plus, okay? And I don't know if that needs to be in my motion or if that needs to just come up in the site plan when we see the results of the report. I don't know how to handle that, I guess, in terms of my motion.
I can't see why it can't be in the motion, where you're talking about increased sound restriction.
Okay.
Part of those motions.
All right. So my motion is to approve, subject to all staff comments, and in addition to review thoroughly the sound engineering report and have the ability to make that more strict if needed.
And weekends?
Yeah, subject to weekends only, and again...
For the tours, yeah.
Yeah. And again, with the other staff comments.
And the bride and groom only, as far as the...
Right.
You have a motion? Go have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, what happens five years, 10 years down the road? What are the... I got married on Thursday. I think. It's been so long now, I don't remember the day of the week, but I think I got married on Thursday. What if somebody comes in 10 years from now and said, "Well, I want to get married on Thursday"? What are the provisions that say, can we... Do we have any teeth in that that says that 10 years from now, there won't be a Thursday wedding in there?
Well, what would happen at that point, of course, the pattern book, as it's submitted today, says only weekend events, and as Commissioner Cushing was discussing, you know, he would like to keep it at the events, actual events, at the weekends. If that ever were to change, that would have to come back before this body go through this whole process that we're going through right now, if they wanted to change it. Now, I think your question is more on the lines of, okay, what happens in 10 years if they just happen to have a Thursday wedding but never changed anything? At that point, we would reach out to the, you know, the owner, applicant, and tell them, "This is what your pattern book says. You're not supposed to be having weekend or events other than on the weekends." So it's one of those where it's, you know, first time, shame on you; second time, following, shame on us, because at that point, we need to start enforcement of the zoning code, because this would be part of the approval. This is what it says. We could start enforcement proceedings.
And there would be fines involved if they violated it.
Eventually, there could be. And our goal is always compliance, regardless of whether or not there's any monetary enforcement behind it. Most of the cases that we would deal with on a zoning enforcement standpoint would be resolved before it ever got to that point, but there is the ability for court fines and court actions and things like that, yes.
I'd answer your questions. You're gonna have to wait to Saturday. You're gonna have to wait to Saturday. You can't do it on Thursday.
If you ever get married again, yeah.
If I get married again, it's gotta be on Friday or Saturday out there, huh?
Further discussion? Further discussion? We got a motion as long as the time we spend here. Yes, sir?
I may have an amendment. Got a question. Does the pattern book or does this historic building... Is this locked in as a historic building for as long as this property is there?
That's on... My understanding, it's on the federal register. So that's separate from anything that we enforce. So as long as they meet whatever requirements are required of the federal register, they would stay on that. So that...
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah. And I guess supplement to that, in the pattern book, it stated that the historic building stays.
Yeah, they're using the bill. They're not tearing it down, they're using it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's in black and white.
Right. I mean, that everything... I don't think it specifically states in there anywhere that I can remember that this will not be torn down, but they've mentioned several times in there that, you know, they're gonna use the existing building on the property. So I'm sure they can clarify that pretty easily, though.
Okay. I'm just gonna say, add to my motion, that the historic building is... Stays as part of the PUD. Second that, Jeff? Okay.
Okay, we've had that motion basically changed with the agreement of the second. You're okay? All right, the motion is coming before you on item REZ22021, location West Jefferson Avenue. It's a motion to approve with staff comments and added additions to it. Madam Secretary, let's call Roe.
Ms. Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Cushing?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Curtis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. Just a reminder, too, that all rezoning requests will be considered at the November 17, 2022 Board of Commissioners, and just to let you know that, that it will come up at that time. We'll now be moving on to the next item. Go to... Now, back to item one. Melinda B. Black, REZ22023, location 6990 and 7034, Last Cassis Pike, Commissioner District, Steve Piercy. Size of sites, approximately 4.4 acres. Existing zoning, residential medium RM. Proposed zoning, commercial services, CS. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. These properties, as you stated, are located along Last Cassis Pike. The applicant's proposing to both zone both of these parcels to commercial services. According to conversations with the applicant, there are no current development plans and no concept plan have been submitted with this application, so this request is more speculative in nature. The applicant did make a similar request earlier this year, where some property to the west, which is near the intersection of Delay Drive and Last Cassis Pike, which was approved, again, back in April of this year. Both parcels do have access to Last Cassis Pike. Since we don't know proposed uses at this point, whatever those uses would be, they would have to meet the parking requirements and access as far as those requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. We could require a traffic study if we felt that one would be warranted at that time, but like I said, at this point, we don't have an idea what the uses are. Landscaping, as far as buffering, these are both required to have type 2 buffers if they're be adjacent to residentially zoned property, which would be on the east, south, and west sides of these properties. Buffering can consist of landscape material or combination of landscaping, fencing, and that would also be shown on an engineered site plan. And the formant standards, as we discussed in the last application, would also be applicable in this case. This is zoned, near property zoned currently as commercial services. There is a county convenience market located directly, well, not directly, but to the northwest of the subject property across Last Cassis Pike, and the properties are within a designated rural center according to our comprehensive plan. We know that this is more speculative in nature, and we tend to shy away from those a little bit, but overall, we're comfortable with this request and would recommend approval. So be happy to answer any questions.
If not, we ask if the applicant would like to come forward, or their representative.
I do own the property. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Melinda. All right, we'll now go into the public comments. Public comments is open. Any comments? You come forward, you have three minutes. I think we've all seen the drill, so... Name, please.
I'm Dylan Hudson, and I bought a house at 7064 Last Cassis Pike. Basically, my concerns are that I'm literally right next door to this, and when... I think he said something about a buffer. There's a great buffer right there already on that side of me. I would request that it stays. I mean, it's 10 foot from my line.
Which address was yours again? I'm sorry?
7064. It's on the... Yeah, that one right there. Basically, that's my main concern. The other concern I have is, if you go back towards, I think it's the first tract right there past the Dollar General, I think, the lady that owns that, her family built that house in 1960, so she's gonna be sandwiched right in between two commercial properties, which in turn is gonna, down the road to me, once they sell that house or something, it's gonna be commercial. And then forces me to go commercial. And I think just down the road, I think, because your property value isn't gonna go up being right next to a commercial property, in my opinion, I guess, unless I went commercial. So that's my concerns with it. I know it's not, you know, I'm the only guy... I'm only... There's nobody next to me on either side right now, so... But basically, I just would like for it to be residential. It doesn't mean much, but I like, you know, I don't live in Murfreesboro. I live in Last Cassis. I didn't even know where Last Cassis was until I started looking for a house. So I would like for it to stay that way. Thank you.
If not, public comments are closed. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner? I'd like to make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Have a second. Have a second, Commissioner Whitworth. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion with special emphasis on buffering.
What I think we can do, since this is a conventional zoning, we're not allowed to put any kind of conditions upon it. However, I will say that a lot of, when a lot of developers look at land, you know, it's a lot easier to preserve an existing buffer than it is to try to tear one out and then put a new one in. I think that's something we can look at at more at site plan, whenever we do see a site plan for this.
Withdraw my amendment.
Okay, sir. Generally, we have a motion on the floor with a second. Those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. If you don't mind, can we take a break for about 10 minutes? And we'll come back in about 10 minutes. I'll call us back in session. We're ready for item two. Jay Dev Patel, REZ22024 is the number. Location, 6167 Shelbyville Pike, Commissioner District. Jonathan Beverley. Size of the site is 2.36 acres. Existing zoning is residential low density. Proposed zoning, commercial services. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to zone this property commercial services, as you stated. According to conversations with the applicant's representative, they would like to develop the property as a gas station and convenience market. They have also indicated that depending on the septic soil availability on the site, they could also have a small restaurant, but that they're still evaluating that, and the commercial services would allow for that if everything else works out. These uses are classified as general retail trade and food and beverage services in our zoning ordinance again, so those are allowed by right. The applicant's representative had indicated that they would like to provide diesel fuel for 18-wheel tractor-trailers. We did express concern to them about the size of the property and whether or not it had the ability to accommodate larger vehicles. We also informed them that truck stops are not allowed in commercial services district. So that doesn't necessarily mean they can't have a diesel pump, but we wouldn't want to see any facilities for truck stops, you know, larger truck traffic and things like that. Since that time, I've had some further conversations with the applicant's representative and said they're really intent is really just to have the gas station convenience market, not so much the 18-wheel tractor-trailer. So I think that one's, as far as we're concerned, is resolved. They did not submit a concept plan, but they did submit an example of one. Mike, if you could go to those different... Look at the PDFs there. It's the... Yeah, that one right there, yeah. This is not of the subject property, just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. But this is kind of an example of what they were showing. Now, again, this is showing kind of the truck stop and things, but again, based on the conversations I've had with our applicants, the applicant's representative, they said that this is primarily just going to be gas and for, you know, passenger vehicles, normal passenger vehicles. So again, this is not the subject property, it's just an idea of kind of the direction that they wanted to go with that. This does have frontage along Shelbyville Pike and Christiana Road. Current access, as you can see from the aerial photo, is along Shelbyville Pike, which we believe would be the more appropriate. There's not just a whole lot of frontage there along Christiana Road, and you start getting into the state right-of-way there. Well, it's actually all state right-of-way because 269, but we do think that the Shelbyville Pike access is probably the more appropriate of that. Of course, if this is approved, they would have to submit an engineered site plan, which we would look at, truck turning templates. Even if it's not a truck stop, we would still want to make sure that emergency vehicles could traverse the site as well as gas delivery vehicles and things like that. So that would still be a need for that. And again, we could also request a traffic study if we felt one was necessary. Being that this would be zoned commercially, they would be required to provide a type 2 buffer adjacent to residential property that would be on the south and east sides of the property. the property. Again, that can include existing material, but in absence of that, they would, could use new landscape material and also fencing for that, and our performance standards also would apply. This property is less than 1,000 feet to other non-residentially zoning property to the north. It's also included within the Christiana Rural Center, which is identified on our comprehensive plan, and also anticipates non-residential uses, and is also at the intersection of two state roads. So with that description, staff is comfortable with the request, and we did recommend approval of this. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
If not, is there anyone to speak for the applicant, or does the applicant have something to say?
Enoch Jarrell with Hudson Steel Engineering. I think Doug has pretty well gone through this project. It's 2.36 acres, and he says he's really intended to, a gas station, he was going to have a diesel, he's not looking for a truck stop at all, it's just, we're going to offer diesel at this. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right, we'll now open up for public comments. Anyone would like to say anything? You have three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, public comments is closed. Commissioners?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman, with staff comments.
Motion to approve, staff comments. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Kush. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Number REZ 22024 does pass. Now, item 6A3, Atish Kumar De Patel, number REZ 22025, located on 7225 Manchester Highway, Commissioner District 6, Jonathan Beverley. Site is approximately six acres. Existing zoning is residential medium density RM. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This property is adjacent to property that's currently zoned commercially. The property located at the corner of Manchester Pike and East Gum Road was rezoned to commercial general back in October of 2019. Originally, a special exception for a boat and RV storage facility was granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals back in January of 2020. The Planning Commission actually considered a site plan for that facility in March of the same year. The site plan was deferred, as there were several questions about the plan, it still needed to be resolved, and nothing was ever brought back for our review, any revisions. So the site plan just kind of died on the vine, so to speak. The current applicant's would like to zone a portion of the subject property, it's about an acre right to the east, and combine it with the tract that's located at the intersection of Manchester Pike and East Gum Road, again, for a gas station and convenience market. And this is an allowable use in the commercial general zone. There is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets. It's not a plan development, so it's not binding, but at least gives you an idea of how they would like to develop the property. Of course, if this is approved, they would have to submit an engineered site plan that would meet county requirements that would also be considered by the Planning Commission. Should this application be approved and the property combined with the adjacent tract, that would have to be done via a subdivision plat. It would have frontage along both Manchester Pike and East Gum Road. Again, the concept plan does show access onto both roads, one on each side. The access on the south side there on East Gum, just looking at the conceptual plan, we think that might be a little too close to the intersection that's at East Gum and Manchester. Again, this is conceptual, it's not, we're locked into this, but I think there's opportunity to push that a little to the east should this be approved. Number of parking spots, parking lot design access would all be determined by the zoning ordinance, and again, shown on an engineered site plan. If new access is to be approved off of Manchester Pike, it would need to be done through TDOT because that is a state-federal road. Properties in the commercial general district are required to have a type two buffer, kind of like we talked about in the last application. This would be on the east and north sides of the subject property, and our performance standards would also apply. Expanding the parcel, at least from staff's perspective, expanding the parcel on the corner of Manchester Pike and East Gum will not materially affect the surrounding area. It's, there's already commercial services zoning on the parent track, which is just a little bit to the east. You see, that's an electric, electrical contracting business right to the north where Mike's highlighting on the map. You have an existing mini warehouse facility right to the other side of East Gum Road, and you also have commercial neighborhood zoning, kind of catty corner from the property located at the intersection, which is adjacent to the property under consideration right now. So considering all that, staff is comfortable with this request, and we do recommend approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question. On that, on that site plan that you just showed, it fits on one acre?
No, the portion, they're looking to combine that acre with the tract that's on the corner, so that would be for the entire site, not just the one acre. Yeah. I'm not sure, I don't remember how much that one was.
So why?
So it would be about, total would be about two and a half, 2.6 acres.
So they're just asking for one acre now?
Right, that, they would have an acre in addition on the adjacent property. The, the commercial general zoned property is a separate tract of land, so they're asking to take about an acre of the property under consideration today. The rest, it would still remain residential medium density. Basically, they would sell this portion of the property, and that would be combined with the property on the corner, and then they would develop the entire, the entirety of the tract, about two and a half acres.
The existing commercial general site is right here. Right here. They're wanting to add another acre to it right here and combine it with this one.
I think primarily for soil, because there's a soil site on that particular acre of land.
Okay, so the acre that we are approving tonight is not touching Manchester Highway?
That's correct.
Okay, I got you now.
Other questions? If not, I'd come forward.
Jarrell with Hudson Steel Engineering. The reason this project didn't move forward before was they didn't have a salt or septic system. So this, adding this acre to the existing acre and a half will provide them room for the detention and the salt facilities, the reason they're wanting to rezone this and add this to this parcel. And be glad to answer questions you may have.
If there are no questions, I'm opening public comment for item 6A3. Anyone like to speak on this item? Last that you come forward, you have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one, I'll close public comments. Commissioners?
Ms. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the one acre, commercial services, with staff comments.
Motion has been made with staff comments. Have a second? Have a second? All those in favor, say aye. REZ 22025 has been approved. Item four was withdrawn. We'll go to item five. Eli Walden for Giant Garages II LLC, number REZ 22027. Location is 611 East Jefferson Pike, Commissioners District 2, Steve Piercy. Size of the site is approximately eight acres. Existing zoning is light and industrial. Proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a little unusual request. This is actually a down zone. We don't see these too terribly often. Application that's been submitted, what they're asking for is to rezone this to commercial services for use as a mini warehouse facility. Now, the property is currently zoned light industrial. Light industrial actually allows mini warehouses by right. The issue that the applicant is having with this is the light industrial zone, although it allows the use by right, the lot coverage in the light industrial zone is a little more restrictive than it is in some of the commercial zones. So they are asking for a rezoning of this particular property in order to take advantage of the additional lot coverage. Basically, it goes from 50 to 60 percent, and that counts buildings and paving and all that. The only caveat with this is that commercial services does not allow mini warehouses by right. There has to be a special exception. The applicant is aware of that, and just felt that would be the route they would rather go than trying to, with the model that they want to build and the concept that they have, it would be more advantageous to them to actually get a down zone, which it's similar to property which is zoned right to the west, as you can see, with a similar type facility, than it would be to try to fit their development within the lot coverage requirements of the light industrial zone. That's kind of the background of this particular application that we have. We do have a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets. They are looking at a development that would consist of eight buildings, about 180 storage units, an office parking area, large paved driveways to accommodate larger vehicles such as boats and RVs and things like that. With that, like I said, that's kind of the background of this. If this is approved tonight, they will have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals in order for the special exception for the mini warehouses. But if that's approved, then they would be able to develop with the CS standards as opposed to the light industrial standards. And I think Mike has a couple of comments he wants to make.
Consent the drain?
No. Okay. Now, the question had to do with the drainage of the property, just a matter of doing a consent to drain.
Their, their proposed plan is to use the existing detention pond on the adjacent property, and I was asking Doug, does that need to have the same zoning as the parent tract?
I think just a consent to drain would be fine with that. So I can go into a little more detail with my staff comments if you'd like, but that's kind of the, the overall, the overview of this particular property. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And we did recommend approval of this. We really didn't have any major issue with, with this request.
Not, do we have the applicant that would like to come forward? Sorry you had to wait so long.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Demossi, for that presentation. My name is Kimberly Flood, I'm the project engineer with Womble and Associates. I agreed with everything said in the presentation and would be happy to answer any questions if anyone had any.
We'll move now into our public comments. We'll open it up for public comments on item REZ 22027. Anyone like to come forward, you have three minutes to address the subject. One's coming forward, I'm closing public comments. Commissioners?
I got a question, Doug. Can you, can you zoom, or Mike, can you zoom back in a little bit?
Yes, sir.
That light purple, were the, are those two separate sections, two separate owners?
Two separate properties, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. It just seems odd that you've got that one long, like, strip, and then all of a sudden in the back like that. And I'm assuming that they do not own the current mini warehouse?
That's correct.
So it's two, two competing?
It'd be two, basically two different facilities, correct.
Okay, and you said it's about eight storage units, so it'd be similar in size to the one that's on the existing?
Without knowing the exact size of those buildings, I mean, it'd be a comparable type. I think they're going to have probably larger units just because they want to do boats and RVs and things.
Right, outside storage, okay.
Well, actually, I think they want to do some of it, mostly it's going to be a lot of it indoor. I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of outdoor, not that they couldn't do that, but I think they want to offer some larger units in order to be able to store boats and RVs and things like that.
Okay, and what is, in the, yeah, what, what, is that just tractor-trailer storage right there? Is there in that strip? Yeah, what's going on there?
It looked like shower.
Those are showers. I think one of the locals owns a plumbing company around the corner, and he's probably storing some stuff right here.
All right, so there's, there's no neighbor, per se, really? Okay. I would make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion made to approve, staff comments. Have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
All our business, moving now into old business. No old business? Any staff reports?
Just real quick, I know we've been here for quite a while tonight, just wanted to kind of update you just real quick on the training session. We're trying to get a training session planned here, probably for sometime in November. You'll be seeing an email from us over the next few days, just kind of get your availability, see what that is. Planning Commissioners are required to have four hours of training each and every year, so we try to do a little something either throughout the year, or if we don't have that opportunity, do one longer four-hour session. That's kind of what we're looking for. We've been talking to Nick about some possible topics, Mike and Sheila about some things as well, staff, you know, ourselves, the planners will, it's going to be a fun time, so just be, be on the lookout for that, and we'll, we'll pull you on some, some dates.
Jonathan, why are you refreshing?
We might be able to coax her into that, yeah.
Anything else? If not, it's 8:55, we're adjourned.